My name is Anand Stenigavasun. I do a lot of things, but I am well known for running a YouTube channel called Money Page in Tamil. So where I talk about finance and money and I also have other channels in English and in Tamil. I also at times not popular because I am political and I have my views very clearly. So I am a member of the Congress Party. I am also a member of the All India Congress Committee. So that puts off people at times, but that's the way it is. So what I wanted to do is Deepa came to me to help him plan her finances for her son. And then she introduced Gopi to me and I consult with a lot of people. I have about fourteen thousand clients. I have about fifty to sixty clients whose children have various disabilities. And then after this, I started sending them to scan to Gopi and Deepa so that they can be a part of a community. So Deepa asked me and brought Gopi along and they wanted me to do a presentation for parents who have children with special gifts. I call them parents with special gifts because my parents went through it. I am severely dyslexic. I am not autistic, but I am dyslexic and also I am a foursome child. So because I am a foursome child, I have restricted ability to use one side of my body. So if I have got here, then lot of kids can get to a lot of places. Famously Churchill was also dyslexic. So a lot of dyslexic people have done very well in life. In fact, if you have seen Taree Zamin Pe, that's a classic case of a dyslexic child. So in terms of what little I know about autism, it's a spectrum. And everybody at some stage will be in some spectrum or the other. One to one fifty has become one in thirty-six. So some of these children have extraordinary skills. So they are slightly different than most of us and so people look at them with a difference. But according to them, we are different and they are the normal. So the society needs to adjust and unfortunately, society has not made the adjustments. So what we can do today is I am going to talk about how you can secure their future. Normally I tell people that you prepare for your retirement. You guys are special because you have to prepare for your children's retirement also. That's about and there is nothing else on special about you. So let's take a look at this. First, I thought I will introduce you to a man. This is Donald Triplet. Now, why is he special? He is the first known person to be diagnosed with autism. Before that, of course autism existed. We didn't know people were autistic. So this guy was born in nineteen thirty-three and his parents thought something was different with him. And they had committed him to institution like most people are do it. And then they felt guilty and they bought him back and they sold him to a psychiatrist. I forgot his name.
Caner.
Caner, yeah. Caner and he and ten other kids, he identifies and then calls it autism. This guy had a normal life. No, that is why it's very important. And he died only about a couple of months back, age eighty-nine. So that's a long life. And his mom had a bank, a founding family of a bank. In America, you have each town has a bank. Each town is a village. So this guy belonged to a town called New Forest, Mississippi. And his father was an attorney. There is a documentary made about him. It's called In The Different Key. It's PBS has made a documentary. I asked Gopi to Google it and you can watch that. It's not only about him, several people with special gifts like this guy. This guy had a special gift with for max and multiplication. So he could multiply two three-digit numbers faster than a calculator. That's what his boss told about him. So he had a full life as you will see in the documentary among his own community of people who protected him. In fact, the director says, the lady says, his friends told him, if you mess with Donald, we will take care of you. So with a protected community, people like this can have a normal life. And this is a real story. There's a book and a documentary on this chap. So you can clearly get a special screening for yourself. This will give you a lot of hope. And so we wanted to start with this hope that you can have a normal life. And he lived to be eighty-nine. He went to church and he live in the community. He lived with his oddities. He graduated in high school. He studied French and he was a cashier in the bank. And so this is his life story. But why I am saying this is it is possible and he will not be able to speak. So his friends speak for him in the entire documentary. So if you look at the documentary, you will understand he has verbal and social skills problem, which is the most common problem you will face. So the onus is on you, not to feel ashamed. What is most important for you guys is how to protect the money for your next generation. So you have to create an estate planning tool called a trust. It's a legal structure in India. So you can have a private trust. So if you have a private trust, your trust has a life on its own and so it can last for however long you want. So if you can transfer the assets meant for that child into a trust, nobody can dissolve that trust. Nobody can take that money. Nobody can play with it. So it is a legal entity to hold property or assets for a person or an organization. It is in perpetuity. You will have lawyers. I have already given Gopi ideas of how you can do it. The ideal way to do it is to have some of your family members in it, but also have somebody from the community. Scan is a big community. So if you have somebody from the community whom you know will live much longer than you do because you will have new people entering this community all the time. So if you form a chain and the community keeps on replacing people in the trust, there is even the remote chance that your family abuses the trust does not happen. So it becomes foolproof. Because that person, if it is scan, scan has put a nominee, then they will interfere. The child is not taken care of, there will always be interference and they will go to court. The trust can be designed in such a way. Scan, I am told, has more than two thousand five hundred members. So that is why New Forest, Mississippi becomes very important. The town has about five thousand people. If they can get together and take care of a person, all of you, if you organize yourself in a proper NGO, you can take care of these special kids in perpetuity. So first worry, what will happen to my child or my dependent after me will vanish. And that's why that documentary becomes very important. There is no way his parents could have survived till Donald turned eighty-nine. So if Donald could live comfortably to ninety, your children can live comfortably to ninety if you are smart. If you organize yourself properly, plan it properly and put enough safeguards, it can happen. Couple of generations back, in my generation, this was easy because we had a whole joint family. Unfortunately, the joint family system has broken down and it has become a nuclear family now. So you will have to look outside your family for support. So this is what Gopi is doing. Becomes very important that you build mutual trust and scan becomes a proper organization. It becomes a proper organization in the sense it can represent, it can be a person in the trust. It can nominate somebody to the trust to just to see everything is going on okay. The kid is getting care after you. And that is why it is very important that all of you band together and form a community like Donald's family form the community for him. And that is why that documentary becomes extremely important. And then you have to do a lot of succession planning. What happens to the trust after the child's life is over? If he has other siblings, do they inherit it? If you don't have other siblings, does it go to scan or what do you want to do with it? It all that has to be laid out very clearly. I am giving you a very important, this is because you will get the idea of the trust has to be very clearly defined because you are in a thinking person. So you protect the life of the dependent and you also say what will happen after his time is over. So there is no ambiguity. All property snatching, asset snatching happens when there is ambiguity. It is very difficult, but don't leave any ambiguity. And it is better that you draft the trust. If the siblings are involved, call the siblings or call everybody else and say this is what you are planning. So there is absolute clarity. So I in fact told Gopi that a copy of a trust should be given to the organization because they know exactly what to do when you are not there. Most of us are scared of talking in public. We think there is great shame in admitting things. There is no shame. What this is, what it is. So be upfront, be transparent, be clear. So that puts a lot of thing addressed. That is your biggest worry is what will happen to my child after me. It can be done legally and there is no way it can be broken. The most famous trust in Tamil Nadu is the Pachepas Trust. They have been trying to break it for two hundred years. They have not been able to break it to a point where it's now taken over by the High Court and the government nominates it. I am not in great favor of a government taking over a trust because you run down Pachepas College. But it is better than somebody snatching the trust and using it as a private vehicle. So they have not been able to break, even the family has not been able to break the Pachepas Trust. It's a public document. You can go and check it. The party I belong to has a trust in Tamil Nadu written by the great Kamaraj. It cannot be broken. Nobody can touch with it. Several people have tried and continue to try, but it cannot be broken. So it gives you a complete protection. Only thing, it will not be tax-free, so it will require a lot of planning because it's a private trust. Public trusts are tax-free, but it is better to pay the tax and keep it private. The Tata wealth is held in trusts again. So it's a very viable tool for you. The most important problem you will face in your own lifetime and for person like me, it's my lifetime I am overdone with. For you, it's not only your lifetime, it is your child's lifetime. To give an example, I didn't put up the bill here, which I normally do in other places. When I was five, my father bought a gold chain. He bought gold for twenty-seven rupees, twenty paisa a gram. He bought eighteen grams. His shop still exists. It's Humudi Bangaru Chetty. It was in March nineteen seventy-three. And today, that eighteen grams is eighteen grams. My dad bought it for five hundred bucks. For five hundred bucks, I will get nothing in gold today. It's more than a lakh. And it is true of all currency, whether it is US dollars. At that time, thirty-six dollars bought thirty grams of gold, an ounce of gold. In matter of fifty years, nearly two thousand dollars is required to buy thirty grams. So irrespective of currency, irrespective of government, in any democracy, the value of currency will be debased so that that's the way you win elections. So this is given. So basically you are planning for currency debasement. If you are sixty, I will worry about twenty. You will worry about the next seventy, eighty years. So this is what you have to worry about. What you are trying to do is to try to beat this. And the only two instruments to beat this is gold. But the problem with gold is it does not give you any income. Gold has zero cash flow. You buy gold, you keep it in the locker, you pay for it. Gold does not give you anything. No, because then Monday, two thousand rupee can disappear, gold bond will also disappear. Because no government, even if I am the Finance Minister, will like gold because I am converting useful currency into a useless asset. I am doing that only because the government of the day is debasing currency. If you did not debase currency, nobody will buy gold. We all buy gold because we know for sure currency is going to get debased. I am completely influenced by the Jews of what happened to the Jews. So if you want to move from one place to another place, from Warthon, Europe to America, those who landed with gold and those who did not land with gold. There's a very famous case of Robert Mayer, who's a Jew who ran away from France and he straight checked into Vodalforstoria in New York. He had a office in France. He set up his own office. It's an investment banker firm that exists till today called Lazarus because he smuggled all this gold into piss and ran from France to New York. And those who came without gold had to spend one year in Ellis Island so that they would be let inside America. So gold as a currency is in times of trouble. Like Sri Lankan Tamils who came with gold have big hotels in Trichia, I know for sure. My friends are there. If you did not come with gold, you will still be in a camp where you have to go and report yourself once in thirty days. So this is the importance of gold. So I normally keep twenty-five to thirty percent of my liquid portfolio as gold. The other is equity. The younger your kids are and the longer you are alive, you can take risk with equity because equity is like it can go up, it can come down. It does not mean that it has to be a bad company. Tata Steel, it's one of the best companies. My father worked for Tata Steel. In two thousand eight, it was thousand rupees. It dropped to two hundred and fifty rupees and now it's back at thousand plus. It's now split. So you will see it as hundred and thirteen, but it's split. Same thing with Tata Motors, another Tata company. From five hundred, it dropped to seventy and it's now back at six hundred. So you will have to deal with extreme fluctuations and it will be gravity-defining. So if you are not willing to see your investments go down by sixty, seventy percent and stay calm, you have no business being here. So the best, if you don't want to face that, better to put it in index funds and go to sleep. And if most of you are well off, you must also look at hedging your equity positions with investments in global markets. Of course, the government of the day has made it difficult with that twenty percent percentage of tax. You have to pay it. Of course, it can be adjusted with your tax returns at the end of the year, but you need that so that it's a hedge against rupee depreciation. Both gold and foreign stocks give you a hedge against depreciation of the rupee. So this is a major problem. So as you grow holder, it's a delicate balance. That's why the trustee comes in. When you move from equity to bonds, when you have large sums of money, a lot depends on each individual. Bonds are available from a lack of rupees. So while you are growing money in equity, gold and foreign funds, you will have to be taking away a certain portion and putting it away into bonds because bonds will give you monthly, quarterly and annual payouts. The way to ladder this, we call it laddering, but the way you do it is the bond interest is much more, at least fifty percent more than the actual money the child needs because the balance money can be reinvested to keep the capital growing. Capital needs to grow because you cannot say I left one crore. It's making nine lakhs and my child is comfortable because twenty years down the line, nine lakhs will become worthless. So this one crore has to become five crores in those twenty years and that nine lakhs has to become forty-five lakhs. Investing in emerging countries and even developed countries is running on a treadmill. You run on a treadmill to stay where you are. And the good news is it's same for you and same for me and same for everybody. Only thing, you have to run longer. You have to run for the next generation also. So there's a delicate balance of when you move, how much you move, how much is already protected. I take it off the table and put it there and I don't need the money today. So I can reinvest the interest. And then there are dividend yielding stocks. Dividends yielding stocks come one in a blue moon. On that day, you have to plunge. ITC was a great example. Karnataka Bank was a great example where you made ten to eleven percent on dividends. If you had bought ITC at one fifty, you will make ten percent FD returns. So it can act like a stock. The capital will increase. At the same time, the bond-like structure will also be there because ITC is not going to vanish. So this is what happens. So you, these are the only instruments you have. You put it in government once the problem is. Governments has a problem because it does not have any government, including American, Indian. For any government does not have enough money to pay for the its borrowing. So what does it do? It allows inflation and so it becomes meaningless. My father had three hundred and fifty rupees as first salary. In terms of gold, it was eighteen grams. Today, no fresh graduate will get eighteen grams of gold. So it's a running race, it's a race and most of us are running it on the treadmill. That's what I want to tell you. So this is very important. Emerging Gopi, all the time to lobby to make sure that your children have enough medical insurance. Right now, this is a problem. People with special ability, they don't give insurance in India. And even with normal people, after fifty is a big problem. So if we have a corporate insurance which is carrying the child, you try to figure out how you can extend it. And I suggested a route to Gopi. Gopi has taken a different route, but you should move it very quickly and get this done. You should really lobby for it and make it an act of government that those kids need medical insurance. And there is a hundred-year history to say it does not matter. Maybe they want to load a bit, they can load a bit on the premium. So this is very important and don't fall in the trap of life insurance. Life insurance is a product that transfers money from the middle class to the rich. The only insurance you need is term insurance. If you die before the corpus is ready, the insurance company pays for the corpus. That's the only life insurance you need. I tell normal people, for you even more, when you see a life insurance salesman, take out a busuka and shoot him. All banks will tell you this. All your friends will tell you this, but you have to realize the first premium lay, fifty percent will go as commission. So life insurance is not investment. So if you have substantial term cover, if you are less than fifty, you can go up to a term cover of eighty years. So then you have the eighty to get the corpus ready. In your thirties, forties, they give you a life cover up to eighty, eighty-five. So that's why term insurance is important. If you align all these three together, form a proper trust, what is today your biggest worry will not be a worry at all. It can just, as you walk out of this room, it can vanish. And that's why the story of Donald Triplet is very important. That guy was the first guy to be diagnosed with this and he had a very happy life till age eighty-nine. Thank you. If you have any questions, I will take them. But this is what I wanted to tell you today. Yeah.
One is you said typically you have twenty-five to thirty percent of your liquid asset.
That's me, yeah.
The overall scheme of the right, what percentage is recommended for?
Liquid is thirty. I don't, if you already have legacy real estate, you hold on to the legacy real. But today in India, you cannot buy real estate. It will not generate more than two percent return. And after your time dealing with real estate will become a big issue. So if you have legacy, it's good. Otherwise, at least twenty-five percent has to be in gold because in emergency, the trustee can go to the locker, take out the gold, sell it and implement it. The advantage of gold is it can be liquidated into cash nowadays. You can borrow, you can sell, no questions asked. See, all this, there is a problem because the government does not want you to own gold. For you, the best way to do is is to buy gold bees and you sell gold bees. It's an exchange traded gold. Your kid is not going to wear the gold chain. So after your time, no coin bar, you just keep it as paper gold.
You buy it as a stock?
Not, not gold bond, paper gold, gold bees. They will tell you, he's come from my office. You can give him his name, not bond. This is paper big gold bees. It is traded every day. It reflects.
I have one which the RBI.
That hundred is useless because you can't sell. You will sell it at a discount. Gold bees is physical gold in paper form, traded from nine in the morning to three-thirty in the afternoon. You buy and sell like you buy and sell a stock. It's a commodity. It's in, but it's in the stock exchange. It's in the National Stock Exchange, it's in the Bombay Stock Exchange. And you can buy from as low as one milligram.
How do you calculate this process? With a separate exchange?
With a separate exchange altogether, boss.
And the tax impact between private trust and the normal?
She should be able to tell you, but I can also tell you if you are consulting me privately. Yeah, I have an auditor who will tell you how to avoid tax to the maximum possible. The key thing for you guys is not all that. The key thing for you is to make sure that you get the trustee's rate. The idea what I told Gopi is he is in touch with him. The guy who runs ICICI mutual fund, his son is autistic, he is from Madras. So I told him to form a group of you guys through him, get in touch with R and T. That is R and Tata and ask Tata's to give you a special insurance scheme so that Tata's will definitely honor what they say. So that's what I suggested, but he, he went to a bigger group. The bigger group said we'll petition IRDA. But in my opinion, petitioning IRDA will take a long time. This going and asking a old man with a philanthropic bent of mind, he, because it's so small in his empire, he will say, why don't you do it? For him, a hundred crore hit is not a big deal and they will honor their work. So I would have preferred that route because you already in your community have him. So you can go to him, take him and go sit with him and they are not too bothered about a five rupee, ten rupee profit here or not.
The problem you offer so less, Elkana is offering for sixty lakhs. So whereas we like normal savings even by.
Point of, so.
The point is it's still a government company, something like.
See, government, what is the problem is, he will say yes, then you have to go, take all the bills, go there, claim. It has to be cashless and you have a right, it's a basic right. It's that child's constitutional right to ask for insurance when others get that right. Other than spectrum, there is nothing wrong with that child. It's only a question of assessing risk and asking for a premium. If I've gone, I would have even gone for a direct challenge in the court and making IRDA party do it, but all that will take a long time. This is an easier route. You can try this and then try that.
Speaking about that, sir, LIC has rolled out a new policy, Jeevan Shanti.
LIC, I don't know here. LIC is not a general insurance company.
No, no, that's, that's a policy where you know you invest a lump sum and you get a return after five.
That you take in bond itself, no, why do I have to go and give?
The idea here is that after your life, it comes, you know, your disabled child will have it throughout the life.
I am also saying the same thing, no? Why should you go to, this is exactly the problem with LIC and other companies. Why should I pay commission to LIC? Why should I pay LIC? If I can pay the, you are going to pay a premium, lump sum premium. You can put a lump sum premium in a bond, which is what LIC is also doing. Take the interest out of that and discipline invest every month in it into the stock market. Your corpus will keep growing at twenty percent a year.
After your lifetime, somebody.
Somebody, the trust has to do it.
Yeah, discipline.
And if your trust doesn't do it, you will move it to a long-term bond. If you think your end is coming near, you sell your equity portfolio and buy the bond, no? Why do you want, see, the whole thing is you want to outsource the responsibility of management to somebody. That, that, why will the insurance company, it's a corporate without a heart.
No, no, there is a risk there also because it doesn't give you the information at this stage.
There are enough cases, if you go to Money Life Foundation, there are enough cases against LIC in the policies issued in the last nine years. In the last five years, what has changed in LIC is LIC was not a company at all. Not many people know that. LIC was a public benefit company. It had no shareholders. The policyholders were the shareholders of the company and one thing, you gave the government five percent of total collection to ensure that in case of insolvency, the government would bail it out. Over a period of time, money became too much. So this government got greedy without even going to parliament. By attaching to money bill, they made it a government company and sold it back to you. So I can do it also in government tomorrow if I need money. So this is what it can happen to you. Do you want to trust your money there? So insurance, there are only two things. You do a term insurance, that's a very limited, small premium and you do medical insurance. Insurance has a role that is only mitigating risk, not to invest on your behalf.
Your thoughts on mutual funds, sir?
Active funds don't do well. If you want mutual funds, just buy passive funds, index funds because they are very low cost and they just buy the index.
What do we have, immovable properties, more to do with that when we form a trust like?
You can transfer it to the trust. Land is of no use to your child because land is not going to get revenue. So if we have a rent-getting property which you have already invested in, you can move it to the trust. If you have, it all depends, real estate is only an instrument like bond. Whether it is giving me nine percent yield, who will maintain the real estate? How much will it cost to maintain real estate? So we have not yet got it. We have only one or two here, but in the West, you have what is called as REIT, which will give you a bond-like structure again. There is no difference between a real estate and a bond. It all depends on how much you trust the rest guy.
Sir, with regards the bonds, actually there are multiple bonds like secure and secure.
Your choice here. So you will have to study it.
Still there is a.
You have to study it. There are secured bonds, secured bonds are risk-free bonds normally, but depends on the company you buy from. Bank bonds were very good till this government said minimum investment is one crore. It was one lakh. So they made it one crore. So it's a ability to pick the correct thing. But you will have to develop that skill because you are in that position. What I am trying to tell you is, you cannot outsource, that's what I was trying to tell that lady. You cannot outsource it to insurance company and feel secure. You will do well as long as there is butterfly in the stomach. The day the butterfly from the stomach vanishes, you will do badly. That's investment. If I don't feel nervous about my investment, then I am ready to do a mistake. That's true of anything in life.
What sir is saying, the investment is like our children.
Yeah.
Whenever we rely on schools and therapists, we have to take care also.
Exactly.
Um, see, there are so many products.
There are no many, they have only four. I can call you twenty, pay me forty. Either I put in equity and become a partner in business. I lend you money, I get interest. You guarantee, you give me fees. I invest in real estate is investing in bond. The fourth thing is I buy gold or platinum, that is precious metals. You call me any amount of bond, it will all come back to the score. These are the only four things you can invest in. Either I can put it in gold, I can do it bond and real estate, it's the same thing. Can stand guarantor for somebody else or I can become your partner. That's it. There is no other way. So once you put that matrix clearly, you have to see what the product is telling you.
My son is five years old. So what age would be right to create a trust?
No, no, that is when you turn sixty.
Okay.
But right now, first thing you have to do is go out and buy a term for two crores. Up to age eighty.
Yeah, myself and my wife both are soft working.
So both of you are working. Term insurance will come only if you work and you are producing gas flow. So today's requirement, both of you should be minimum two crores. Ensure something happens to you, then if the child has a two crore to start with. Right now, you get the corpus going and then when you turn fifty, you form the trust. But I suggest you bandy yourself into an organization. But I suggest you bandy yourself into an organization, not a loose network. Form a trust or whatever is the legal society or whatever it is, so that you can legally represent somebody in the trust. So that. Then scan should be in a position to send somebody. You can always say the scan will nominate somebody into the trust to ensure that things are okay or somebody you trust, it's up to you. There is no limitation, the Tata's have a little private trust, there are three, four trusts, private trust which control the entire Tata assets. So there is no limit. There are no problems, he has special abilities. You can talk to us, we can talk to an auditor, we can put you onto a lawyer who will form a private trust. But you start talking to Gopi on that, he will work with you on that. Yeah, you can have, as many as people you want. If you don't want from scan, don't take, if you trust your family, there is no problem. But today what happens is, people don't trust their own brothers and sisters, it's a strange world for me. You can have, yeah, you have one representative, yeah.
Sir, good morning, uh, the bond is long-term investing bond is?
Yeah, they are available up to ten years and bonds are tradable.
I mean to say.
Yes, it is transferable, you can transfer to any one entity to another entity.
At any point?
Father to son, son to father, wife, mother, sister, cousin, friend, you can, it's just like a, you just sign a D I slip, it will get transferred. The issue is who will sign the D I slip?
Yeah, see, the term insurance, someone should, should it be some factor of our, what we are earning now or how should we see?
And, but they will put it to how much you earn.
Okay.
Somebody who is earning fifty thousand, they won't give you more than fifty lakhs, so they have an equation. But you should do more, because it's not only your, uh, normal child, the special child will need more money. So it's a factor of how much you need.
Okay.
Where you are, where you want to be, the gap represents the amount of term insurance required.
Okay, thank you.
But you should always remember, the company is there to sell what it wants. Yeah.
So which insurance do you recommend?
I don't, we will work it together, you come, we will work.
Okay, sure.
See, most of it's all math, so you calculate the math and do it. And you want to make sure that the insurance company will be there to pay all of them.
Legal guardianship is part of the trust.
The trust becomes a legal guardian, I think, we have to talk to my lawyers, they will tell you the intricacies.
Can I just take one minute, sir, on this part? See, uh, in the, in the trust, you allow multiple trustees and you can specify the roles of the trustees. For example, you can say that any cheque has to be signed by two of the trustees or it can be signed by one. It's up to you to define how you want it, depending on who you are putting as your trustees and how much you trust them. Because if you are putting, let's say, your other child as that, as a trustee, you may say that my, uh, child will take care of his or her sibling very well, so I can.
You don't need another trustee at all. But the issue why I say you are the trustee is, the problem is not the other child, when the other child gets married is the problem.
No, no, correct, correct. Gets married or something happens to that person, see, all of us are human, that says anything can happen. So it is also important, therefore, especially when it is the person who will be in charge of the trust. Is not somebody who knows your child very well, it's also important to write a letter of intent.
Yeah.
To say that, how do I want my child to be looked after? The examples which were given to us by some of the lawyers was, one parent said, I give my child, even though my child is, uh, you know, has various challenges. I give my child so much pocket money every month. So that is the lifestyle of your child that you want to continue is what you put in the letter of intent. For example, your child may like to buy new clothes and you may be happy to buy every month some new clothes. Another person may not understand that this is how you look after your child. You put it in the letter of intent.
What is the maximum number of trustees?
The minimum or maximum number?
The minimum has to be, I think, at least, I think, two, two, there has to be at least two trustees. And then you can have, I don't think there is a maximum number, but see, there may be some number, I'm not very sure, but logically you will not be. You will not have so many. See, one option you have, and this is something that again, instead of waiting till we are older and this is something we all have to do. Something that Corona has taught us is that everybody's life can end tomorrow. And we have had cases of families where the parents have passed away and left their minor children. Whether special needs or not special needs, with a lot of assets, houses there, this is there, that is there, but no cash. Meaning, they don't know how, they can't access the bank account, because the, the parents only have the bank account, so money is there in the bank, but nobody can access it. It takes a long time to sort out these issues, till then you are, the children are left to the mercy of friends and relatives and so on. So one thing is to actually write your trustee. And you, the, the two parents can be the initial trustees and maybe have one other person as a trustee, so that anything happens even tomorrow. There is a legal document which can take it forward. Having said that, I also should do it, I have not done it. But it is very important for all of us, so the parents can be the trustees initially and, and along with that, you should write a will. Because, for example, if you have a house.
And register it.
And register it, your house, you want it to go to the child, you can't put it in the trust right away.
I can put you onto a lawyer.
Because you put it in the trust, then you have no access to it, you know, it becomes complicated, you know, you are, the trust owns the house and that is the house you are living in, it becomes complicated.
After your death it can go.
So you write in your will, upon my device, it will go into the trust. For example, if there is a house which you are letting out and you are living on the rental property, you cannot put that house in the trust right away, because you will not be able to enjoy the income. Because the trust is for your child only, so you keep it with you, but in your will you write, upon my device, it goes into the trust. Then, so the minute that happens, there is a.
You can mention everything in the will.
You can mention, so you can do it in the will and then you have a letter of intent, which is the guideline for the trustees.
So that the investment decision on behalf of the child, the trust can do that?
Trust will do it, that's the whole idea of the trust. After eighteen you can, but I don't start with it, it's very complicated, don't do it, it's better not to do it. Now, don't do it, don't complicate issues. Boss, I can only tell you, this is all here, there is no certainty, you have to pull the trigger yourself. Trigger pulling you have to do. What I told that lady is what I am telling you, you cannot outsource responsibility. If you are asking me, is the outsourcing of responsibility possible? No, the world is same for you and me. My investments go up and come down every day, your investments will also come up and. So you can say, I'll outsource it to somebody and therefore he is responsible, no way he will do it. He will take fees from you and he will say, I trust my best, that fees have been a co-villa, that's China, but I don't know. So you will have to work on it your own.
Kids, see, my kid is in a borderline autism, okay, it's only forty percent or fifty percent.
This guy is also in the borderline, you, that's why you need to read the book and see the movie, I find it. You can, it's freely available here, you have to just search for it properly and telecast it for this group. It's a seventy minute PBS thing and there are lot of interviews of these two people who made the movie. And the movie is made over fifteen years.
So here, the thing is, he is independent to, to a certain extent, the only problem is the communication issues. So in this case, you know, he can take certain decisions by himself. Now, in creating trust, this is what an issue.
No, no, the communication only becomes the issue, the communication itself will become the biggest, that's what you should see in this. You need the community to protect only because of that communication. He should communicate with the trustees, the trustee should make the decision.
No, no, uh, that thing is, you know, he is not too very difficult, like in the sense, he is almost, you say eighty percent normal. Okay, uh, so the only twenty percent is the lagate. So, uh, wherein that trust, I'm not able to correlate, where he can also have that independence in taking decision.
So you, you separate some of it.
See, this is wonderful, because there is this whole notion of providing support circles and, you know, pillars of support. For the person who needs help and what they call supported decision-making, I know those of you who go to Vidya Sagar might have heard this. Supported decision-making, which is that your child will try and make the decision with support. So what he may need is, you may need to tell the trustees, you take him to see, meet Aran sir regularly, take my son to meet regularly. Aran sir will advise and my son will choose, like our son, I will show four bonds and say you choose. You are saying my son is capable of analyzing and choosing, right? So you have to instruct your trustees, you don't decide what to put it in, but he, let him be part of the conversation with the financial advisors. And let him also have a role in choosing the. Supported decision-making, so you support, so he may need support in the communication, I don't know whether he uses any app or anything else or any other means or he speaks. Uh, or he writes, so he may need support, he may need time to respond, etc. So you have to think, you have to think about it as, suppose I was here, okay, what would I do? And then write it down for your trustees to do.
That's the correct way to do it.